The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in order. This evening, we have with us Edwin Clark, pastor of the First Christian Church, who will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you please join me in a moment of prayer? Oh God, we give you thanks for this day, the beautiful morning that has been given to us with renewed cool temperatures. We give you thanks for all the creation. We also give you thanks for the men and women in this room and around this great city who have answered the call to be a servant, a servant of our community, a servant of our neighborhoods, a service that sometimes goes unnoticed, but we give you thanks. We give you thanks for them, and we pray that your spirit is upon them as they answer this call and make decisions that are affecting our community, and may they be filled with wisdom to make the best decision, and may we do all these things in your name. We pray this saying, amen.
Amen. Tonight, we have some very special guests. We have our girls soccer team, Six and Under, the Dennison Starburst, the Dennison Express, and the Dennison Butterflies, who are going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Ladies, anytime you're ready.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of riches and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag.
Right where you are. We're going to get in there and get your picture. You want to do it this way? Want to put them up there? Okay, come here, real quick. Come on. Can you get all their faces?
Tonight, we have a number of proclamations on our agenda, starting with National Disability Employment Awareness Month. If Marsha Lindsey will join me, I will go down and talk about this proclamation.
Ms. Lindsey is the Deputy Director of Workforce Solutions at Texoma, and they have been engaged in a campaign for several months now. There is a population of people out there who have skills that they can add to the workplace, but they're overlooked because they have a disability. So this month, and this proclamation is intended to raise that awareness so that people with disabilities with some help will be able to provide many skills within the workplace. Whereas workplace welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. And whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month observed each October celebrates the contribution of workers with disability and educates about the value of a diverse workforce inclusive of their skills and talents. And whereas reflecting the important role disability plays in workforce diversity, this year's National Disability Employment Awareness Month theme is "The Right Talent Right Now." And whereas in this spirit, the City of Dennison is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. And whereas activities during this month will reinforce the value and talent of people with disabilities, add to our workplace and communities, and affirm the City of Dennison's commitment to an inclusive community. And whereas I call upon employers, schools, and all community organizations in Dennison, Texas to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities, and to advance this important message that people with disabilities are equal to the past throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Janet Gott, as Mayor, and on behalf of the City of Dennison, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor, Dennison, Texas.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate that. I'd like to challenge each of you as employees, employers, to consider that you may have employees with disabilities in your current workforce, and there may be opportunities for employees with disabilities to apply to work at your companies. So in that light, we have a luncheon that we set up on Thursday to kind of raise awareness of what you can do to help current or future employees with disabilities. So if you're interested, you can go to our website at workforcesolutionsatexoma.com. There's a registration form on there, and we'd love to have you. We're going to have about 150 people, how many we have registered now, so we're very excited about it. We're going to have attorneys there, people that work in the disability community, people that provide accommodations for disabilities, and I think you'd really learn a lot if you'd like to come, so we welcome you. Okay, all right. Thank you again.
If Susan Hooper and Rita Williams will join me.
This is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I did some research preparing for this, and this year approximately 260,000 people will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And of those, 45,000 will lose their lives. And some of this could be avoided with early detection. Breast cancer is not curable, but it is treatable. So this month in particular is to encourage women to get their mammograms.
Amen.
Amen. And I would like to tell you that these two ladies are both breast cancer survivors. So this is a very important subject and certainly deserves a proclamation. Whereas one in eight women in the United States will develop breast cancer in her lifetime, although significantly less common, men are also susceptible to developing breast cancer. And whereas three major factors that influence a person's risk of developing breast cancer are gender, age, and changes in certain breast cancer genes, researchers have found females over 50 years old are the most susceptible to developing this disease. And whereas regular breast cancer screening, including mammograms, clinical breast exams, and breast self-exams also play an important role in breast cancer prevention and detection. And whereas where there is currently no cure for breast cancer, researchers, organizations, and individuals are dedicating their time, energy, and resources to developing a cure to prevent future health issues and unnecessary loss of life from this devastating disease. And whereas this October, we take time to recognize the hardworking citizens, organizations, and healthcare providers working toward a cure, and we honor all breast cancer survivors and victims for their strength, grace, and perseverance. And whereas the City of Dennison encourages all citizens to learn the facts about breast cancer and take the necessary preventive measures, and to support those individuals and their families who are currently battling breast cancer, and honor those who have lost their fight. Now therefore, I, Janet Gott, Mayor of Dennison, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor, City of Dennison. And we have one more. Will Donna Dow and Melanie Truxell and Mark Dennison join me up here? And now I get to talk about something that is near and dear to my heart, and that's Main Street. This happens to be the 40th year of National Main Street, as well as Texas Main Street, and you may or may not know that in May, we celebrated 30 years, continuous years, as a Texas Main Street. We know for sure, without question, that the Main Street program is what contributes to the vitality of our Main Street, and it is our Main Street that makes us special and unique. So I would love to read this proclamation. Whereas Main Street America is celebrating its 40th anniversary from September 2019 through May 2020 to recognize everyone that has been a part of this transformative movement. And whereas the Main Street movement has always been about the people that make great places happen. And whereas the Main Street approach offers community-based revitalization initiatives with a practical, adaptable framework for downtown transformation that is easily tailored to local conditions. And whereas the City of Dennison celebrated 30 years of continuous service in both the National and Texas Main Street programs on Tuesday, May 14, 2019. And whereas Dennison's successful downtown has greatly benefited from Main Street America's transformation strategies and four-point approach, which is a time-tested framework for community-driven comprehensive revitalization. And whereas local stakeholders passionately crafted the following mission on February 18, 2014, stating the Dennison Main Street program will attain great American Main Street status utilizing the National Main Street four-point approach and harness a cohesive spirit and the power of volunteerism to achieve our objectives of preservation-focused downtown revitalization, so that we will be a pedestrian-friendly regional hub with many diverse activities, an eclectic blend of commerce, and a livable environment. And whereas the City of Dennison strongly supports Main Street's efforts to celebrate the thousands of individuals across the nation who make our Main Street shine. And whereas Dennison Main Street will participate in the celebration with a weekly spotlight on our local stakeholders who make our Main Street shine. Now therefore, I, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Dennison, Texas, do hereby proclaim Dennison's support of Main Street America's campaign celebrating 40 years together. We are Main Street. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor, Dennison, Texas. Now, she brought this frame down, so we have to take time to get her picture for her campaign.
It's a national campaign.
It's a national campaign. And what that means is we're getting national spotlight.
Yeah. Okay. Are we all going to be able to get in here?
Yes.
I don't know. Mary, you're going to do it?
I'll come on the side here.
Okay. Mark, you need to get in here.
Well, it doesn't need to just be you.
You know, it'd be cool if all the council people could stand behind you.
That would be total. It'd be really cool.
And now I proclaim that we need the whole county down here.
We should slide in the middle so we can see them.
In fact, if you could kind of, if, well, that would be, that would work. Yeah, so we get the dim.
Are you going to be able to see the line?
We need to do it.
I can write it up here, I can.
Yeah. That's not going to work, Jen. I can almost, yeah. That works. We got it. On a count of three. Mark, I can't see. There you go. One, two, three. We got you.
Now, next on our agenda is our opportunity to recognize some of our very special employees. They're all special. These have reached a special milestone.
Thank you, Mayor. As we started last quarter, we'd like to recognize employees with the City of Dennison that have reached certain marks with their tenure with the City of Dennison. We believe that employees are our most valuable asset, and really, this is the least we can do for those that serve each and every day to help deliver services to our 25,000 residents here in Dennison. So when I call your name, if you join us up here, the mayor will present you with a certificate, and hold the applause till the end, and then we'll clap and get a great picture with everybody. So we had all but one that's able to make it tonight, so we're excited to have you and your family members here as well. First, with five years of service, Anthony Cox with Dennison Police Department. With five years of service, wastewater treatment plant coordinator, Mark Hensley. I think he didn't, I think the woman couldn't make it. Cheyenne Henderson with Dennison Fire Rescue, ten years of service. With 10 years of service, Grant Watkins, sanitation, equipment.
Thank you, Grant.
Roger Virgin, 15 years, Dennison Fire Rescue Battalion.
Thank you.
Skubert Priggy, 20 years, Dennison Police Department. Greg Brown, 20 years, Dennison Police Department. Patricia Spah, permit tech in the building department. Jeffrey House, 20 years, water treatment. And finally, Bruce Gilhausen, 25 years, Dennison Fire Rescue. Give them all one more round of applause.
My camera malfunctioned, so I'm going to do this one and this one.
You need us with Shane, Mary, or you okay?
Let's see what we've got. Yes. If ever Lily on this side can put this shoulder out, and everybody on this side put the opposite shoulder. Okay. Perfect. When all else fails, it works. Thank you.
Now, we've had all of our fun, so we've got to go to work and do a little bit of that. Item three, public comments. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the council reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes and must address items on the agenda. Citizens will be heard, but there will be no dialogue between the citizen and the council. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? All right. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on approving the final payment to TechStot as noted in Attachment C of the Advance Funding Agreement for Katy Trail Phase One in the amount of $220,979.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to stand before you once again to report on the progress of Katy Trail Phase One. In 2017, council supported the application to the Texas Department of Transportation, 2017 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program for the construction of Phase One of the Katy Trail project. The program is an 80/20 program where the city committed to contribute 20% of the cost, which is $229,978. As defined in the Advance Funding Agreement, TechStot issued an invoice for $8,999 in November 30 of last year to cover project development review and administration. With TechStot handling contract administration, the entire 20% match is required to be paid upfront rather than scheduled draws throughout construction. The final invoice for the 20% match has been received for the balance in the amount of $220,979. The invoice will be paid from the general fund with reimbursement payments made from the Parks and Recreation Fund 071 over a period of three years. As you may recall, Phase One of the trail will be approximately one mile long, running from Day Street to Loy Lake Road. This will connect with Waterloo Park, one of our most well-known parks in the area. The trail will be a continuous 12-foot-wide concrete trail with respite areas that contain benches, water fountains, and bike racks. Since this is an abandoned railroad, it will be set in a nature setting with wooded areas on both sides of the trail. And as the trail moves south to cross Loy Lake Road, it will connect with Waterloo Park, which has several miles of unimproved trail through natural terrain, a dog park, a paved walking trail, horseshoe pits, and much more. At the crossing of Loy Lake Road, we will be constructing a 200-foot pedestrian bridge to cross Loy Lake Road. Bid letting occurred September 6, and staff anticipate a pre-construction meeting to be scheduled in the next few weeks, with construction expected to begin by the end of December. South of Loy Lake Road will be part of Phase Two of the trail construction, and staff applied for additional funding for Phase Two from TechStot this past August. I'm excited to see this construction and completion of this project, which will greatly enhance our community and attract visitors to see the many amenities and natural beauty that Dennison already has to offer. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question for Ms. Bowman. Discussion from council? A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the payment of the final invoice to TechStot for the construction of Katy Trail Phase One in the amount of $220,979 from the general fund with reimbursement payments being allocated over a period of three years from the Parks and Rec Fund 071.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenlee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on amendments to the Designing Downtown Dennison Contract with Tool Design Group to include the construction, administration, and design of a city-owned pocket park located at 226 West Main Street in the amount of $169,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Mr. Rex.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Another exciting project with some progress tonight. So up for consideration tonight are two amendments to our, thank you, Fanchin, to our original contract with the Tool Design Group. One of them will cover design of the construction, design of the plans for the pocket park, just on the next block over from us here. And the other one will be construction administration services for the entire Phase One. So that'll include bidding the project, working with the contractor on requests for information, any change orders, really just continued service through the construction phase of the project, which will be starting next year. The breakdown of the costs, I guess you have to turn it on. There we go. All right. So our original contract with Tool Design Group was for $800,000 to include all of Phase One. The first amendment, which is for the pocket park design, will be $72,300, and the second amendment for construction administration for all of Phase One will be $97,300. Total design cost of $969,600. Based on the cost estimates that Tool gave us at the 60% completion of the plans, the total design cost is about 9.2% of the estimated cost of construction. So we kind of use 10% as a general rule of thumb as to whether we're paying too much for design or not, so we feel confident that we're in good shape with our costs from that perspective. A little bit about the timeline for the project moving forward. We are planning to do kind of a design unveiling in November of the 100% plans. That meeting is scheduled for the 18th of November at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Following, or in parallel with that process, we're going to be pre-qualifying contractors on the project that will take place during November and December. After the first of the year, we'll actually bid the project out, so it'll probably be January or February that that will take place. In March, we'll bring a final construction contract to council for consideration, and then probably within 30 to 60 days after that, actually start construction. So probably sometime in May, we expect to start turning dirt on Main Street. So it's coming along. We're close to finishing up design, and this will kind of put the finishing touches on that over the next couple of months and look forward to moving forward. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex. Discussion from council.
Can't wait for next May.
Okay. Right on.
We most certainly do have groundbreaking.
Motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the amendments to the Designing Downtown Dennison Contract with Tool Design Group to include the construction administration for the Designing Downtown Dennison Project and design of a city-owned... for the Designing Downtown Dennison Project and design of a city-owned project, excuse me, pocket park located at 226 West Main Street in the amount of $169,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. That's moving right along. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney and on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with the chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigations or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with attorney and discuss issues related to 1095s processed by TML Health Benefits Pool and two, procedures and legal requirements for changes in corporate boundaries and growth issues. The time is 6:31, and the council is now in executive session. Councilmember Steeple? The time is 6:55, and the council is back in regular session. Confer with attorney and discuss issues related to 1095s processed by TML Health Benefits Pool. Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move, I move to approve the resolution authorizing representation on IRS matter and ratify execution of IRS Power of Attorney Form 2848.
There's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Steeple. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Procedures and legal requirements for changes in corporate boundaries and growth issues, no action taken. The time is still 6:55, and with there being no further business to come before this body, we stand adjourned.